And with the strike of the government, we'll call the meeting of our council from Kingsburg, Pennsylvania to order for August 18, 2021. And we will begin with the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution, one nation under God, indivisible, eternal, to the Lord.
Thank you. Go call.
President Webber.
Here.
Vice President Miller.
Here.
Councilman Anderson.
Hello.
Councilwoman Anthony.
Here.
Councilman Booker.
Here.
Councilman Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Ray.
Here.
Solicitor Cassidy.
Here.
Engineer Rogowski.
Here.
Lieutenant Curtis.
Here.
Chief Knut.
Here.
AMC Wardle.
Here.
Manager Sodowsky.
Yeah.
Assistant Manager Boyle. Here. Please leave the forum.
Thank you. My name is guest for the evening.
I am the guest, sir.
Okay, thank you. This is the time in our meeting when we go to the opportunity for our citizens to speak. We remind you that this is a comments and requests period. We try not to engage in debate. And you're allowed three minutes to make your comments. If the three minutes is not sufficient, you have another opportunity at the end of the meeting for an additional three minutes. Are there any citizen comments or requests? Go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to go, Mark.
Go ahead.
I promised just to take a moment. I wanted to come here tonight to thank the borough for its trust in the Downtown Mechanicsburg Partnership to put on a heck of a community day in the park with a lot of people to thank sitting around this die-off here. And I want you to know how much we appreciate it. We are big spirits of the fund that you gave us to put on this community day in the park. And according to all who participated, it was an astounding success. We had approximately 1,500 people. We counted them. We got clippers. So we know that we're right or close to right. And the opening ceremony was awesome. And we hope to continue to build on that tradition. So just a thank you, a sincere thank you to everybody for all the work that you put in to make Community Day such a big success for the borough.
Thank you. Mr. Stone. I did forget to mention, we know who you are, Jane, and we know who you are, Mark, but any other people who cannot please state in a team address for the record.
I'll do it anyways. We're starting for a meeting on the Florida Street. Only thing I have is, in the last meeting, council approved the demolition and all that of the law offices at the Cora Main and Market. The only thing I have concern, I have not seen it, and I've been in the process with this since about three years now, I've sat on the Harb and also on the planning commission where all this came through originally. The only thing I have concern is, has there been a planned timeframe on this whole thing from the time of demolitions is done to the project is done? What I'm saying is, are we going to tear the building down and let the block strip that's a four, five, six, seven years vacant without them being held beyond the natural in middle town? Because the borough had a contract with DMP that they were responsible for this and the council and the borough is not responsible for this land. I know before they said they were going to be responsible for it. What happens if they don't, a single, their, uh, expectation and it gets turned over to the borough? Are we responsible or are they going to be held responsible for this? Uh, the other thing is, I have, uh, maintaining of the lot as it sits vacant. Uh, they want to be responsible for that, or the borough want to be responsible for this. And the other thing is, I know the shit when I was in council and also on the other, there have not, has been a financial statement brought to the council on this project at all. Do they have the money? When are we going to get the money? If they don't have the money, are we going to be responsible for this? Originally, in the beginning of this whole thing, they said, new taxpayer money is going to be used. Well, I hate to say it, every year we get taxpayer money to this project. A $10,000 from down the budget goes to DMP, totally for administrative costs. That's still taxpayer money going towards this project. Just want to make sure that when the council and the borough residents, taxpayers are not going to be burdened with this thing. I'm all for this thing, don't get me wrong. But we were told in the beginning that taxpayers are not going to be burdened with this, this idea. There's some things with this that have to, basically, I feel should be checked, eyes dieted, teeth crossed, and all those other things before this project goes through. One more thing, I'm up here. Uh, Kyle, I'm in charge in Syracuse, Georgia. I've been cornered by Redmond Borough, so I know all the council, they still come to me. They want to know what is going on with all the stormwater money? They have not seen anything being done with it. There's two tech spaces back in Northside Town. One's been trashed for two and a half years, and another started to track, they're going to lose the intersection in that, in that area. People are not going to move the tax, moving or money going, so they have not seen nothing. They're asking, all they think is another tax. Something needs to be said. Syracuse, we need to step up, say, this is what your money's going towards. That time ends up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Now if I can see how to turn it on. My apologies. Thank you. Are there any other comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to fewer than minutes from the earlier meeting of council on August the 3rd, 2021. Thank you, Mr. Fellman, into a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. Any discussion, questions?
This is just a, I wasn't here, so I just have a question. Did Solicitor Coin actually make a comment while they were during the meeting? Or was it just a misprit that shouldn't be?
I was broke, Quinn, that's happy. I was okay.
We probably saw the word solicitor and skipped right on by. Thank you. So we made that change? The motion will include that change, yes? Thank you. Mrs. Martin?
I'm working on your negative response. I'll refer the vote again.
Thank you. In a minute or two. All right, fellow Leilons, uh, both Leilons, uh, versus the environmental advisory council, Mr. Booker.
I have never heard.
Okay. The Harb, Mr. Booker.
Also, I've never heard.
Long review, Mr. Miller.
I have heard of course, but I'm not that.
Thank you. Mr. Authority, Mr. Vic Miller.
Yes, I do have some, I just thought we had a meeting last night. Um, we've reviewed a few things. First of all, we've, um, brought, given to a presentation by Engineer Rogowski regarding the GIS system and the municipal funding, the assertion to, um, request council authorized funds from the American Recovery Tax Funds. Which they were supposed to be appropriate use of those funds to pay for the GIS system upgrade. And the authority made a recommendation, we can forward Engineer Rogowski's memo and the cost associated with that to the council along with the authority's recommendation, which was for option C. And that would be a full list of items that would get us up and running with the GIS program. And in addition to that, we also were requesting, um, funding for the technology that would be appropriate for using the GIS in the field. So the total estimated fee was $25,000. Uh, and that was, that would be to get the entire GIS program up and running. So, looking for that information, I don't think we'll be taking a special afternoon at the meeting.
No, not tonight. I'll get it prepped for next, next meeting.
So we'll wait up for next meeting for that and you'll, um, definitely receive the information from Engineer Rogowski concerning that. Um, we had another discussion and the board gave direction on Engineer Rogowski's, the HRG, Engineer Rogowski and Superintendent Healy's presentation on whether or not we should place a new screen versus placing the grime pump at the wastewater treatment plant where we're having problems with water items getting into the pumps. And some of the items are also from COVID-related, like wipes and things like that that are causing problems with our pumps. So, uh, this was a significant investment, it's going to be a significant investment on, uh, in the wastewater treatment plant, the estimated cost is over $400,000, which, um, was for the vertical screen, um, which was recommended by both the engineer and the superintendent of the plant in order to prevent the future problems, you know, the problem we have now and problems we'll have in the future with, uh, with our pumps. Um, so that was on suicide. And then we also discussed on the stormwater side, the borough, or the authority, as many know, engaged for, engaged a contractor for street sweeping. And, uh, we've completed just about a year worth of that. There's a total of nine months, I think, that Engineer Rogowski completed an examination, a report on the effectiveness of the program and whether or not it resulted in the, uh, in the poundage reduction that we were hoping for under our MS4 current. And the result of the engineer's, uh, study or his, uh, report was that, in terms of the cost and the, uh, the bank for a buck service fee, when it comes to getting the reduction poundage for our MS, uh, the street sweeping program did produce some percentage for shag, but it wasn't how that we were hoping for. And that we get a better bank for a buck out of a structural, um, structural programs like they use the Northside, I think it was the Northside detention station as an example. And I've heard it all stated that in this, uh, things have worked that the annual cost of the structural, um, structural projects result in a, result in an annual cost of about a dollar per pound for structural change versus about, what'd you say, $4 over, per pound over the street sweeping. So the authority reviewed this, reviewed this, consulted with the engineer and determined that we will not continue with the street sweeping program for MS4. However, the authority did express a concern that they would like to see street sweeping continue in the borough because we did pick up quite a lot of materials in 2020. Uh, it was, what, 63 tons?
It was 130 tons of that.
A hundred and thirty tons of water material over nine months. So we, the authority, giving formal requests to council to, or plea to council to continue street sweeping in some form because not only does it benefit, uh, the borough in terms of the way things look, and we could do better with that on the borough side, with some of the machinery we may be able to use instead of the regenerative, air, regenerative air machine that we were, we were required to use for MS4, uh, street sweeping. Uh, so, uh, the authority would like to find some way to work with the council on achieving, uh, on achieving street sweeping for the borough and depending on what the, um, depending on what the street sweeping looks like and if we could get towards something that would benefit us for MS4, perhaps the authority would contribute towards that program. So their request was not to cancel, but to ask the current contractor if the, um, the contract was assignable from the authority to the borough. If the borough chose, they could take the contract, which is not in its year-long state, but it has two subsequent, or it's two subsequent, one year removal options. So, um, that's a possibility, but we're not sure on that answer yet. But, um, we just wanted to see if that is an option. But I'm sure that we can take a look at other options moving forward. But that was basically the summary of last night's meeting. And, um, you have any questions? I did, I just, I think Engineer Rogowski can give a better answer on this than I could. But we think that I can go on the two projects that we are, uh, going to do this year with the stormwater funds, which was the, uh, the detention station by, by, could have parked correct, and the Shepherdstown as well.
Yes, correct. So we did, they were not the big part, they were pretty good today. Unfortunately, we only had one mirror show up, so that's maybe not a great sign. But then the last bid review, early September, we anticipate, at least reviewing this, basically taking the action of the authority meeting in September. Let's go, we can start in the start this fall and then be really finished up in this thing.
And hopefully we will have our budget by September, that September meeting, because the third meeting needs one, once a month, so we're a bit on a consolidated, uh, meeting schedule. And in addition to that, in September, we plan on conducting a stormwater fee review that we are, um, we are charged with doing on an annual basis. So that's what's going on on the authority side.
Any other questions for Mr. Miller?
I have, I have one question. Um, in the streets, you think, do we think that if there was a schedule, like with the signs that we follow, would that have impacted? Do you think it's probably hard to know?
I, I don't, I don't know what to do with that. So we get more MS4 friends the more times we sweep. So it's really about, about quantity, you know what I mean? Sadly, you know, the MS4 credit and what the streets look like are actually two independent items. Um, so, you know, we're trying to overlap them with respect to the authority to give some, you know, some benefit on both sides of the fence. Um, I think the challenges between our better, um, having a contract super, all of these things, just, you know, sometimes it took us more sweeps to accomplish the mission. Um, that, it, the, when you get the bank and the buff, even if we did more sweeps, we'd get like a percentage point more. So it's just, from the MS4 perspective, it's not a, a great way to, to reduce your pollution.
To the extent possible, we did have a regular schedule. It was every.
It, it got there eventually. And we can see the last couple of hours.
To get.
Exactly. I agree that there was a schedule, but I think that from the perspective of always having a sign that told you to park on the other side of the street, what I saw was them going around cars and we have a lot of big vehicles. I just didn't know if they made a different remark.
And we, we did discuss that. We had lengthy discussions on how we could make that possible. But in the end, it didn't work out with the contractor mode, it didn't work out with, with the authority would have come the borough council to change.
You know, if it comes back to council, we don't have to follow the MS4, we can correct it, I don't have to.
Sometimes it ain't broke, don't fix it. If you could go back to the old way, a regular schedule that's already posted and might, might be a little off the ship. I just have one comment, if no one else has anything to say, and that's with regard to the screen that Councilman Moore mentioned. I don't know if any of the rest of you have been aware of this or seen this, but there's pictures of this floating all over the internet. It's not happening just here. And with COVID, it has become increasingly more of a problem than it was before. Others like bath towels, um, boots, and the main problem is flushable wipes.
Cottonel has not changed. Cottonel still says on the label flushable wipes and they're not.
And they're not flushable. So, you know, you, you, you can tell people all day long not to do that, but they're just going to do it anyway because once it, you hit the flush handle, you don't care what it does, you know, unless you're sitting in fifth seat. So, uh, so I think it's a wise move to investigate that and move forward with that. It'd save us because when they get in those pumps, they can remember a very expensive pump, totally useless. Uh, so it's, it's really worth, it's really worth it. So thanks, thanks for including on that.
Superintendent Taylor, that pump was currently down?
We have, we have three headwork pumps. One is, is down. Uh, the shaft broke, the bearing broke. Um, the other two have both been replaced, uh, or rehabbed at $20,000 apiece. The repair for the current one that is broken is, is in the neighborhood of $10,000. Um, and there are pictures of our guys in up to their shoulder trying to pull stuff out of these pumps.
Yeah.
And they don't know what they're reaching their hands into. So we've got to do something, um, with, as you alluded to, COVID, the problems with the pumps just went through the roof.
You know, a part of the reasons a lot of people are home, diapers. So they got to work, they're not having cold pumps. So they live, they're having cold pumps, so. All right, uh, for any other questions for Mr. Miller, we'll move on to the planning commission, Mr. Fellman. Okay, the planning commission did meet July 26th of, yeah, and, uh, I was not unfortunately present at the meeting. However, uh, the new business presented at that meeting resulted in the agenda that we voted on in our last council meeting regarding the man wanting to put in the auto dealership at what used to be Elphova Components and, uh, and the property, Little House that sits next door. And, uh, so we did vote at the last council meeting to have a commission review hearing now set for September 7th at 6:30 before our next council meeting as to whether or not he, uh, will be granted permission to do that. And that was the main focus of that meeting. Uh, are the, uh, planning commission next meeting, August 23rd at 6:30? And that's all I have. Any questions for Mr. Fellman? Bearing none, we move on. Recreation Board, Mrs. Drygerton.
Um, before I met for on the 10th of August, I was unfortunately at another meeting. Um, but the minutes did result also in some of the action items you'll see on our agenda this evening. I'm talking about increases for our staffing and also talking about cutting the rates for the next school season. Um, we know that at the pool, we've had a very busy year, so I think the staff again for what they've been doing, the sliding boards have been taken, are, are out of use for the rest of the, the spring year. And then we'll be looking to make some replacements with them for safety reasons. Um, so you will see all the proposed rates, we'll, we'll discuss them this evening. Um, the other thing that, um, I would like to just acknowledge that the rec board did help downtown partnership, it was a fabulous event. Um, I think it brought a lot of people out in the sunshine, which we all desperately needed. Um, and I would like to just note that the recreation board did get the banners for our veterans based on the polls. Um, and the feedback from our community members has been phenomenal. So, um, I just want to thank the rec board. And I know, um, Mayor Webber was very instrumental in working the beat and taking downtown's own school number, which I didn't know you would have to do, but that's what we did. So that is our report, we'll continue to meet, and I appreciate your input.
Any other questions or comments for Mrs. Drygerton? Just a sidebar, although on the subject, a special thanks to the fire company and Chief Matt for the installation of those banners. A fine job was done and it didn't cost the borough anything. So, thank you very much. Shade Tree Commission, Mr. Booker.
Uh, the Shade Tree Commission was not able to meet. They are looking at rescheduling this month, but, um, it looks probably more realistic to go to the next month meetings.
Is there, is there any, uh, update on the five sycamore trees that are in danger at the park?
Uh, that's why I was, Mr. Booker said they didn't meet, but I was instructed by Shade Tree to remove them.
Well, no, I was just referencing, uh, an email that I received that said that they were unable to meet, you know? And I was, I was not.
I thought we were having an arbiter come in and make final decision on that.
They're dead. They're, they're not savable. Um, the prices I got to remove them, uh, I was going to discuss it in a minute.
Okay.
Report, so, um, that, that's, excuse me, I, that's.
There's always hope that we can save a tree.
I'd, I'd love to save these trees, but they're, they're beyond hope right now.
And dangerous to note.
Yes, yeah.
It can really be dangerous for family.
All right, the school board, there are a couple of things to refer. Obviously, the opening of schools is coming up very shortly. And, uh, of course, if you haven't been keeping up with it or following the news, you must be living under a rock, but the, there is not only in Mechanicsburg, but every neighboring school district that you can think of is having a quandary about whether or not students should be masked or not. Um, the current board decision on that is to make it optional. However, I think the CDC and the state and maybe, uh, or EMC can comment on this at some point, are probably going to lean toward requiring masks. But I will say that, um, the, the, the school board and the superintendent are really having a tough time with it right now with the, the, the type of comments they're getting, um, the, the negative reaction they're getting, particularly for those who think that masks should be optional. They seem to be, they weren't spoken. Um, so if you have an opinion one way or the other on it, I, I would appreciate if you would just drop a line to your school board representative and/or the superintendent's office in support of their decision and/or your comments because I think it's important for our students to be safe. And, uh, from my perspective, that seems to be the best solution regardless of what you think about wearing masks or not wearing masks. As you see, we are all wearing them here tonight. And I think it's important that we do that given the nature of the way COVID is going at the moment. My own personal comments, and I apologize for that. Any other comments?
Well, President Webber, I expect to you that I had attended the school board meeting. They do not have an easy job. Um, but I would implore anyone that has strong feelings that they should expect them in a polite way, um, to be able to make a rational decision. Fortunately, the CDC have released the recommendations prior to the school board meeting. But the response that I received from them was that they were going off of July's guidelines. So hopefully, um, you know, those decisions will be easier when they're reconsidering the CDC guidelines. It may be some of Nate's wonderful knowledge that we can pass on.
Any comments? Sure.
I'll, I'll make them in my meeting plan.
Thank you. I figured that. Okay, uh, managers' report.
Uh, man, I've got, I passed out some information for everyone to look at, the fleet management information that I got. These are preliminary numbers for a 10-year plan, um, and estimated savings over those 10 years will run $250,000 as far as our vehicle maintenance goes. This would include 20 vehicles for the borough, the code car, the highway trucks, the sewer plant trucks, and the, the patrol cars, the police cars. Uh, the, uh, the chief and I met with these guys about four years ago, and their plant wasn't quite as robust as what it is now and it can have the savings involved. There's a lot more savings involved right here and it's, they've, uh, they've finalized and smoothed out some of the rough spots that we've come across before. He will be here September 7th, uh, to give a presentation as a guest. So if anybody has any question, I want to get this information to you guys. I've been feeding him more information, so he's going to have these things refined and we might have a more pointed number. This would be the vehicle replacement plan in place of the one that we come up with, where we're purchasing vehicles and doing this. Uh, this. Uh, this would, in, uh, four years, replace every vehicle in the borough of Kansas. So, um, and then we would be able to rotating shift, we would keep vehicles for about four years, carry them in, get new ones and keep going like that. Add a rather substantial savings in insurance, fuel, um, and maintenance costs. We'll be prepared for that. So, um, I reached out to five or six of the reference alone there to try to get more information from them. I didn't hear back from Columbia Borough. Columbia is pleased with what they've done. They've done everything from five fifty trucks to a fifteen passenger rep man, um, and they are pleased with, with what they've got. They have seen, they've been with them since two thousand seventeen and they are seeing a significant savings in maintenance costs, uh, fuel costs and insurance costs. So that is, we look forward to that presentation. He'll be here, uh, hopefully we can get that drilled down. The tree tearing on Main Street was completed today. Um, like I said, I did have a bid for the sycamore removals. They're only at three thousand dollars a tree. Those trees are big, they're dangerous, they're nasty. Um, it is going to take probably four or five days to get those five trees down, uh, because of the size of those trees. Um, that's the one we received from our mower as he was up there looking at those. So that's where we're looking after that. So, uh, one of the things that I got today through email was, um, South Mountain Charlie Greenway, and this is for the community, or, uh, the community economic development committee. Uh, South Mountain Charlie Greenway has requested to be included in the comprehensive plan at least mentioned if we, when we have the room in Florida to do that. So, uh, the rest of my report I provided tonight as a written report. We'll actually leave that in a minute. Um, I did go back to June on this report because we didn't meet, um, we had a meeting in there that we missed, so this covers everything up through this afternoon's B and T, pre-b and B. So that's all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the manager? There are none, we move on. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much. July twenty-fourth, Lincoln Cemetery ceremony by the Vietnam veterans of Mechanicsburg. Cumberland County Register of Historic Places, flat unveiling. Twenty-sixth, officiated the New Bar Castel wedding at True Value, twenty-five West Main Street. No fee. Thirty-first, officiated Albright at the Monness wedding at the Alps Lodge, Colorado. Fee, hundred and fifty bucks. August seventh, community day at the soldiers and sailors memorial park. President Webber, Everton, Rupert, Tavon, Webber from Councilman Barrett concede ceremony Mike Drake's congratulations, which I have here, which are available to take a look at. I can read. You can state Pennsylvania recognizing the hundredth anniversary of our park. Vietnam veteran service pins were distributed. Fourteenth, noted citation from the Bar Mechanicsburg and Aquila City, the Eagle Scout Joshua Eastlake for his court of, of honor. Fourteenth, helped through a hot dogs museum open house and yard sale. Trivial question, how many soldiers, what soldiers are buried at the Lincoln Cemetery? I'm sure you don't really know, but the answer is twelve. It was when the burial was in eighteen sixty-two. Any report?
Thank you. Any questions for the mayor? That was an interesting, uh, bit of history there, thank you. Uh, chief of police report, can I first?
Uh, nothing other than, uh, I was also present at the school board meeting with the chief of police, um, for recognition of the superintendent and the school themselves because of communication that they have with the police department and the relationship. Uh, I certainly have that, uh, I know from experience of training other police officers in going into the schools, um, sure, by the train, to actually train them during the schools. When you have the communication back, I've done about four classes with that. And, um, the communication that we have with our school district as a police department is second to none. Uh, a lot of times, uh, other police departments, even the leadership superintendent is amongst us, have a first name, face recognition. Uh, it's also at the, uh, school police there that they have the city, kind of recognize the school police as well. Um, again, just the recognition and the, and the health and the relationship that we have with the school district is phenomenal. Um, and there were certainly some, uh, feelings at the school board meeting, but it stayed calm and, uh, it was at least, uh, the opinions were forgiven in a good way. Um, that's all that I have.
Thank you. Any questions? Solicitor's report, Mr. Cassidy?
All right, just one item to add, Mr. President. I can notice on the agenda, uh, that we don't have an, uh, action item for the ordinance for the economic development license. And so when it comes time for the approval of the agenda, I would just request that that action item be added.
Thank you. Any questions for the solicitor?
Chief report. So I did distribute my report out, but I do have a story that I want to share with you. Yesterday, uh, I received a phone call about the fire victim from four twenty-sixth West Simpson. Uh, the individual was, um, hard to understand because his voice was, how much air pitched because of, uh, so much smoke inhalation down into his lungs, that he was having trouble talking. But at the same time, he asked me to share this with you, um, his condition roughly, that, how thankful he was that he was here today. So, um, a couple of things that I did reserve a redo in the report. One of the biggest things that I got from that was not only the performance of the firefighters in, in the borough, but also, uh, the smoke alarm project that we do there. And he was alerted to that smoke alarm sounding and that's what initiated his journey from the second floor. Um, unfortunately, only made it a couple of steps because the smoke was so thick and toxic that it took him down to his knees and then obviously unconscious at that point until the, the fire crews found him. But, uh, he is a very humble, willing individual. So it was, it was, it was just a great joy for, to be able to talk to him. And I wanted to say thank you to everybody that, uh, supports the party, part in the whole way, showing that it went on. That's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Any questions for the chief? There are none, we move on to Mr. Royal.
Good evening. Uh, you have my written reports, several things I want to highlight. One is that one of them's already outdated, um, as far as being concerned about not having any flooding, we don't have a flood watch because the remnants of Tuckles Storm, what Tuckles Storm around Fred?
Fred.
Tuckles Storm and Fred are going to go over some part of Pennsylvania over the next, uh, day, mainly tomorrow, uh, and there is a chance of flooding. Uh, so I know I've been in communication with Roger. Uh, main concern, I think, is mainly going to be whether there's fog, storm drain, uh, but hopefully there won't be any major issues, it looks like. But heaviest of the rain is going to be toward north, uh, in the northern part of the state, so the Sutcliffe Inn could potentially issue some issues. Uh, in addition, I've been reviewing the county hazard mitigation plan. I, it's fundraising for people like me and everybody else that probably not agree with that. Uh, so also working through that in addition to the latest update from the, uh, from the International Committee on Climate Change and, uh, have been corresponding back and forth with Roger and showing us all through, uh, looking at some options for what the borough can do to better place ourselves moving forward to be prepared to address some of these items in the future. Um, I think that anything that can be done now before anything is mandated is a, a great way to go. And I think that, um, you know, for a borough the size of Mechanicsburg that doesn't have some of the same threats as far as, uh, body of water, they, there's not going to be a lot of things that can be done, but I think there could be some steps that can be taken. So I will work on some more actionable items on that and certainly work with Roger, uh, in seeing what can be done in the borough and along with some of COVID. So cases are up, uh, we've had cases over two thousand, cases per day several times over the last ten days. Uh, today was over two thousand, actually not as high as I expected. Tuesdays are usually the highest day. Um, hospitalizations have been up significantly. Uh, as I said in my report, they were four forty-five on July thirtieth and now, uh, nine oh eight on August twelfth, so it more than doubled in less than two weeks. Uh, now, August eighteenth, uh, we're at, uh, right under one thousand two hundred. So, uh, up almost three times in, uh, right around three weeks. Um, I know that the hospitals in Cumberland County are seeing COVID cases again. Uh, ages are trending younger, uh, it's more thirties and forties where we're from, where we were previously. Uh, regarding schools, uh, the recommendation from the CDC which came out on August fifth was that, uh, masking is highly recommended in schools. Uh, that is also the current guidance from the Penn State Department of Health. I think that there may be a desire from many school districts across the state to put something more direct in place. But I think the Penn State Department of Health, for obvious reasons, faced politically over the last year and a half, is ready to do that, knowing that any decision made poses a number of threats to the work done by the department. Um, we have seen in other states, mainly Florida, Mississippi, Louisiana, uh, schools that have returned with either no masking or optional masking, uh, significant, and I'm talking hundreds of cases in one school district, uh, that have led, in multiple states, Texas as well, uh, that has led to those schools having to shut down for a period of time and extensive contact tracing having to be done. Um, I personally, uh, see all sides of this. I have a special needs son who's autistic, who's five, he's going to be going into kindergarten and we cannot get him to wear a mask. And so I completely understand all sides of the argument. Um, obviously, the best way to protect somebody is to be vaccinated, but children under the age of eleven and under don't have that option. Uh, so, uh, certainly, certainly it is a difficult task that our school districts are facing right now. Um, and so I, I would agree with everything that President Webber said about, if you have the moment to offer a word of appreciation to the school board for the work that they're doing, I, I think it would be appreciated because they're certainly, um, up against a wall, um, and trying to do the best for the students that they represent while also listening to many different voices at the same time. So that, but I'm certainly willing to take any questions that anybody has.
Nate, I asked a question last time I saw you and just for the public. I know we talked about Delta variant testing. Can you speak to that? Because I think that there's a lot of confusion about the, the breakthrough and whether we test for Delta.
So generally, the state, the state's lab, which is based in X, does not have the capacity to test for the Delta variant at this time. We are working actively to be able to do that right now. Um, I saw something today, uh, in our daily report that said, in, uh, most regions are rain, I think it could above ninety-five, in region three is Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Delaware, Maryland, Virginia, West Virginia, DC, um, maybe around two other states there. Uh, but ninety-five percent of all cases or more are the Delta variant at this point. So pretty much what we are seeing is all Delta variant. There's very few cases that are not, uh, representative of the Delta variant at this point. Um, like I said, the state is working on having the capacity, whether it's working through private labs or our lab itself, to be able to test specifically for the Delta variant, but that capacity is not here to get.
And then, um, speak to the breakthrough. So I know that that's a big concern right now with the breakthrough. Do you have specific of how many people are having a breakthrough?
So up until the beginning of July, I think it was, the CDC was requiring states to report breaking cases to them. Uh, that stopped at that time, so the state has not been capturing those. However, I, I know that our epidemiologists have just recompleted a report and I think there's a desire to make, I haven't seen the data, but I know that there is a desire to make some of that data public, um, through some kind of publication of the report. I don't think it's going to be a dashboard. Um, but the important thing to remember, and this has got somewhat lost in this, is that from the beginning with the vaccine, you need to look at the COVID vaccine similar to you look at the flu vaccine and not in the way you look at the polio vaccine. If you get the polio vaccine, you will never get polio. Or the chance of you getting polio is very, very small. If you get the COVID vaccine, it's much more like the flu vaccine because there's so many strains circulating. And so a flu vaccine, they say it's about fifty percent. The COVID vaccine is significantly higher than that, but it does not mean that you are fully protected. And so breakthrough cases have always been expected. I think that the messaging from the CDC was not as good as it could have been to explain that point clearly, so that people moved to expect cases. But what we have seen is the people who got vaccinated and had ended up getting COVID, whether it's a Delta variant, whatever strain they got, they have not gotten sick, they have largely not need to be hospitalized, they have largely not died. Of course, that's not all cases. There's cases that are, that are severely immunocompromised, who have been vaccinated, have died, but generally speaking, the numbers are much, much lower of people who have been hospitalized or have died, who have been vaccinated compared to the alternative people who were not vaccinated and then either had to be hospitalized or died. I know several hospital networks, including at least One Hand, Pennsylvania, Los Ban, have put out data showing virtually all of their hospitalization have come from people who were not vaccinated.
My last question is, um, so I, I know that booster shots have been made available for people with compromised immune systems. Do we know, do we have a timeline for, one, vaccines for five to twelve-year-olds? And then two, when booster shot could be recommended for the general public?
So booster shot, so that's an interesting question. Supposedly, the president may have said yesterday that booster shots are recommended for the general public thirty-eight months after you receive your second dose. The world health organization is trying to get all countries to not give booster shots because they want to make sure that enough of the world can be vaccinated to an extent. And so I think there's still, we, from the department perspective, are still waiting guidance from CDC is exactly what we're supposed to do. But eight months for people who got vaccinated in December, healthcare workers, their eight months start, or their eight months are up in September. Um, second dose would have been in the middle of September, so their, their eight months, or in the middle of January, so their eight months is pretty much up. Um, we're, we're still waiting guidance on that. Uh, that was the second part of your question, what was the first part?
Didn't, no, I'm sorry, five to twelve.
Five to twelve, um. I don't think it's public knowledge yet, but I can say, hopefully within a month. Uh, and that would be for the Pfizer vaccine.
Thank you. I can't believe I asked you any more questions. It's probably the end of the year.
It's because when you said we in the hour, you mean in the first of the cancer, you said our lives.
No, I mean, the department of health. I'm, 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 I'm in love with something, right?
I can read your mind.
And you just thought the garage door was open. Well, it happened when I was away for a week, but I knew that much.
Any questions that you'd say, but any questions for? Andrew, no, thank you very much. We appreciate the information as always. All right, uh, as per, uh, Solicitor, uh, Cassidy's comments, we will have one addition to the agenda, which we will have to move on before we do have a, we're going to be in others. No, I just have, I'm sorry, so would you kindly word that for us, Mr. Solicitor? And then would somebody make a motion?
Certainly, so it'd be a motion to, it'll be a motion to approve the ordinance for the economic development license, uh, for, for our own, Inc. So that's the motion. When we get to the motion, though, there's, there's some nuances to it. So someone's going to have to make a motion, either to approve the, the ordinance to approve the application or to approve the ordinance denying the application.
I, I, as we were having the hearing, I broke down discussion and action to adopt ordinance eleven seventy-one, approving or disapproving the request of Salero Incorporated for an economic development liquor license.
Does this not follow the same guidelines that we have to advertise for a certain number of days before we can approve the ordinance?
So this ordinance has been advertised? Um, and so if, if, if you have an opportunity to read the ordinance, it's, um, it's a, a yes or no, uh, And so if you have an opportunity to read the ordinance, it's a yes or no proposition for council this evening. Either you vote, one or the other, you have to enact the ordinance, and that's required under section four sixty-one of the Penn State Labor Code. So council is required to enact an ordinance, either approving or denying the application submitted by Floro Inc. So when the time comes for this action item, there will need to be a motion from the floor, from one of the council members to either to approve it, approve the ordinance, approving the application, or to approve the ordinance denying the application.
I move to have it added to the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Anthony, move to the second. Is there any second? And Solicitor Cassidy, that will be a rule of conduct. As an ordinance.
Yes, right.
Hearing none, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the vote as unanimous.
And the addition was approved. And now we need a motion and second to approve the agenda with the addition stated.
I'll take that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Martin. Is there a second? I'll second. Thank you, Mr. Booker. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the vote as unanimous.
Thank you. Action items before the council, the seat, Mr. Sodorsky.
Action items for our council on April seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Discussion and action to reverse Hampton Township eleven thousand nine hundred and two dollars for the paving of South Norway Streets between Main and Simpson Street. That was attachment one.
I like that motion. Thank you, Mr. Thelma. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anthony. As council may recall, this was brought up a number of months ago, and council agreed it's okay for the manager to proceed with the negotiations, et cetera. So this should not be a new thing to any of us. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries. Next item, please.
Discussion and action to approve the special guest program for the New Year's Eve ranch drop on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, from nine p.m. until twelve thirty a.m. on January first, twenty twenty-two, attachment two.
So Booker. Thank you, Mr. Anthony. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the vote as unanimous.
Animation carries. Next item, please.
Discussion and action to approve the New Year's Eve ranch drop banner to be hung over East Main Street for December first, twenty twenty-one, through January fifth, twenty twenty-two, attachment three.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Aggersen. Any discussion? Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the vote as unanimous.
Thank you, and motion carries. Next item, please.
Discussion and action to approve a pay increase for inside clerk and front desk staff at the Mechanicsburg Area Community Pool for the twenty twenty-two season, attachment four.
I'll make that motion.
Sorry, I'll make that motion. Thank you, Mr. Thelma. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And Mr. Anthony gets that one. Any other discussions? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries. Next item, please.
Discussion and action to approve the season pass and daily rate increase for the Mechanicsburg Area Community Pool for the twenty twenty-two season. That was also attachment four.
So Booker. Thank you, Mr. Anthony. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Taggartson, second. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the vote as unanimous.
And motion carries. Next item, please.
Discussion and possible action to open negotiations with Upper Allen Township for a new quarter.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
And moving second, is there any discussion?
Has there been any conversations today?
Informal, yes, between Scott Fraser, or, yeah, Scott and I, we've discussed a few things. He is a Mechanicsburg mayor. He took over for Lou Fazekas, who retired from Upper Allen Township. He is very excited to do this. He would like to see us continue the partnership that we've had. They really don't, he, there's no long-range plans for them right now to pull in. So our pool is good for them. And looking at the memberships this year, we had two hundred and seventy-five non-resident participants at the pool. We had fifteen hundred and thirty resident memberships sold to the pool. So there were a lot of pool passes. Now, those were rollovers from two thousand nineteen, too. So, but the non-residents really went up this year. So we'll see where they want to go. We know there's two years left in the current agreement, and we figured that would give us time to work something out and figure out how we're going to keep moving forward with it.
Thank you for getting it. Don't start on that. Still waiting, still. Hate green, it's over. Any other discussion? Ms. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries. Next item, please.
Discussion and action to conditionally accept the dedication offered by Manning Homes Incorporated for the West taper development. That was attachment five. And Solicitor Cassidy and Engineer Rolfsky can add a lot more detail to this.
So by, very quickly, the conditions for the approval of the dedication will be, number one, for the maintenance of ten thousand dollar financial security for the stormwater pond, and then also conditioned upon the developer providing real estate title insurance for the facilities that are being dedicated to the borough. And I can say that this afternoon, I received proof of the title insurance for the items that are being dedicated to the borough. So that condition is like that. As for the ten thousand dollar security, the borough is currently in possession or holds sixty-two thousand dollars in security as part of this project. Ten thousand dollars of which will be held by the borough, and fifty-two thousand dollars will be returned to the developer upon satisfaction of the completion of those improvements, the satisfaction of the borough engineer.
So by way of this, this is weirdly known as the Mechanicsburg Commons Project that has, you know, it was initiated in two thousand three, I believe, or somewhere around there. A lot has happened between now and then, but nonetheless, this is the closure of it. On the streets have been paved, they've been inspected. The improvements are adequate. In fact, I did do the inspection with the developer about, I don't know, like, three weeks ago, maybe at this point. And it's in a position to be able to be accepted by a borough. So typically, we don't have street dedications in the borough very often, so this is a little bit of an anomaly. And it's a further anomaly just given the way that this particular development came about. So it is for the section of what would be West Coover Street between Washington and Broad, as well as a little stub called West taper Court. As this is calculated, we've worked through a lot of issues related to financial security, the dedication, as well as completion of the improvements, and even the original approval back in the early two thousands had some conditions associated with it, related to the stormwater pond, which is what Mr. Cassidy indicated was holding security, which is not typically a normal item that we do, but in this case, it was part of that original approval, so we may take it. So in all, we're good to go, essentially, you know, with the conditions as proposed.
Thanks.
Any clarification? And you know, part of what the recommendation is with respect to the conditions includes a refunding of fifty-two thousand dollars security to the developer with the borough holding onto ten thousand dollars.
All right, we need a motion approved. Thank you, Mr. Anthony. You want to start second? Second. Mr. Thelma, second. Is there any additional discussion or questions for either the solicitor or the engineer? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries. Next item, please.
Discussion and action to adopt ordinance eleven seventy-one, approving or disapproving the request of Floro Incorporated for an economic development license.
Move to approve. There has been a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And there's a second to approve from Mrs. Taggartson. Is there any other discussion?
If I may, just to clarify, motion to approve the ordinance, approving the application.
Yes, sir. What you said. Any other discussion? Thanks for the clarification. Martin?
Councilwoman Taggartson? Yes. Councilwoman Anthony?
Yes.
Councilwoman Booker?
Yeah.
Vice President Millie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pellman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Or President Weber at home? We have a winner in this, um, in favor.
Congratulations.
Well done.
Thank you. All right, we have come to this course of the meeting for additional citizens' comments. Remembering again that we have three minutes, if I can figure out what works with my timer. Everyone's been stuck.
Yeah.
I got you.
Thank you. Thanks. No, thank you. Just got a question.
Just like to congratulate Gary Mess, I see in Paris Magazine, he was upgraded, Best Star Fighter, and Harry's reading it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Something was quick, and I didn't know how to stop. On that subject, I had a recent discussion with Chief Lieutenant with Schools, Dr. Lady, and he had all the growing reports for Chief Matt and the police department. So your commentary, you did not go unnoticed, and your actions, Chief, did not go unnoticed. We appreciate both of you and what you do for our town, and keep up the good work. Any other citizens' comments? Hearing none. Is there any other business? Okay, before we go around, I just want to make an announcement that we will be having an executive session on a matter of personnel with potential action immediately following this. And we did have an executive session on a matter of personnel, two matters of personnel at the last, meaning no action has been taken at this point. So if there is no other business, we'll start with Mrs. Martin and work our way around.
You want to start?
Everyone's favorite subject aside from when do I get rid of my Christmas tree? Silver Springs Township set Halloween trick-or-treating as October thirty-first, Sunday evening, six to eight p.m. Just letting you know.
Six.
Yeah. Six to eight, Sunday evening.
We would like to have this on that in the post-meeting in September.
Yes.
Not for the Sunday, because the holidays are going to start soon. Put on your bathing caps, gentlemen. Try not to wear again.
I'm late.
I'm late, sorry.
I think Sunday shows too, but I'm proud of it, which is cool, right? It's Halloween.
There you go.
You know, we're supposed to be a weekday because it's.
Yes, we always tell them, usually the Thursday is when we have it.
Our opinion would be we want to make sure. That's all I have. Mr. Mann?
Senator Breggin's congratulations, however, it's here in the papers.
That is a resolution.
He listed it as a, as a restoration.
Oh, he showed it as a resolution when he read it, so. Oh, well, he misquoted himself. All right, thank you. Mr. Anthony? Just a couple of quick things. First, I haven't had a chance to ask you about this, but what's your thoughts on the timing of the budget to come out for review?
The same as every year. We're looking at probably the end of September, beginning of October.
Beginning of October.
Yep.
Just want to set the date in advance for the busy times. I wanted to thank you for the tree trimming on Main Street. That's awesome that we got that done. Thank you so much. I know they cost us some money, but I think it helps with the safety. Trees and sinkholes have been the big, big issue.
Yeah, yeah. I just want to congratulate Jane and the DMP for Community Day that was successful. You guys did a lot of hard work to pull that off in the midst of a COVID scenario. Seems like it went very well, so well done. And I wanted to pass on my congratulations to the chief. I didn't know for your award. That's great. Congratulations. That's all I have. Thank you.
The library's run for reading was also very successful the same day as the Community Day, and I think they made close to ten thousand dollars at that event. Also, the library's book sale is this coming weekend. That's all.
Just want to express also congratulations on Community Day on the successful rent. And I'm sorry I was not able to be there, but I participated in the Hershey chocolate tour that particular day, so unfortunately, it was too many things going on to change.
Booker.
I've got that.
I think I've talked enough.
Mr. President, we're ready to get a range of dates for robotics assessments, so that looks like it's going to be in the middle to end of September lately. We're looking to shoot to get before, you know, leave so far. So we'll certainly get the word out. There's going to be strange-looking trucks running around town. I'm certain that there will be at least one call, phone call in the Borough Office department. We'll keep everybody updated on that schedule, but that's what we're tracking right now.
I don't know that I want to bridge this subject, but I'm assuming we're still going to continue to meet in person. But since I discussed it at the last meeting during this time in the meeting, I figured I would at least bring it up for consideration before council.
I think we have to answer.
Yeah, so as things currently stand, council must meet in person. There's, we were able to meet remotely because of the governor's emergency order, which expired, I think, June twenty-eighth. So unless the governor issues a new emergency order under his Emergency Powers Act, we have to continue meeting in person.
Which the legislature will now have to make that determination, I think.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's interesting.
Would be if the legislature would take action to, let us need virtually choose to ourselves. Because it would definitely help us for committees and participation.
Let's start writing my address.
But we will continue here to wear masks until further notice.
And that will be the same with Borough Office. We're going to put signs up encouraging people to wear a mask when they come in. Vaccinated or not, with the breakthroughs, I think we need to do something, one, to protect the workers in here and to protect the other residents that are out there.
Absolutely. Thank you, Nate. Chief?
We'd like to thank the books that supported, invited for me, and simply the best. But I do haven't asked. I'm still scratching my head here trying to find who really nominated me, so. Anybody in this room, if you have a good idea, you can stand, please. Yeah, I will tell you, thank you. And Chief, August third, Mechanicsburg Schools is going to start. We're going to stagger, start, let's start washing for children and buses out there. Obviously, with the pandemic, you've seen less kids on the streets with where they'd be going, the schools and stuff. But this year, we're going back to work, everybody in the classes, at least at the beginning. So keep an eye out for those, because we're kind of missing on that. And other soft schools are starting as early as next week, as early as the twenty-fourth. So certainly, outside of the East Main, keep an eye out for children and school districts as well.
Thank you. I just have one item, and I know this is not since the meeting to give a museum report, but I want to let you know enough in advance. On Saturday, September twenty-fifth, the museum is going to be celebrating the two-hundred-twentieth birthday of the Frank Abert Tavern, as well as doing a dedication for the garden portion of that area. We encourage you to attend. There's going to be crafters' day, blacksmiths, tin smithings, spinning, horn carving, broom making, spoon making, and all those other cool things you always wanted to do in a free time. There are going to be cooking demonstrations by Charlie Guy, doesn't even know Charlie. Charlie's a married guy and used to be one of the chefs over at Hershey, I don't know if he still is or not, but he does a lot of the cooking flashes. And someone, Perry Boetek, is going to be there to make soup. And so we encourage you to attend that. There will be formal invitations coming out to all of council in the next week or two. So we want you to mark your calendars now. We'd like to make this a big event. So we appreciate your support, all of you, over the years, including Rebecca's hard work on getting the building acquired, demolished, and then drawing it over to us to move forward with the project, which I think has been, uh, was slow, quite successful. So we thank all of you for your continued support of the museum, and hopefully by making this kind of a big deal celebration, we'll call a little more attention to some of the things that the museum does in the town and maybe get more people involved in what we do. So thank you very much. So thank you very much for that, and if there are no other comments, this meeting is adjourned.